Acceptance to the Westminster redevelopment agencies meeting right now seven P M. Wednesday, April eight, twenty twenty. Uh, because of COVID nineteen, so the city council continue to be to be conducted by. Our teleconference and web conference only. Roll call. See you, Clark.
Mayor Todd.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah.
Councilmember Do.
Here.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Thank you so much for that, and I will salute to the flat and. Councilmember Nguyen will do invocation. So please stand and put your right hand over your heart. Repeat after. I'd like to lead you to the flag. The United States of America.
To America. To the Republic for what's instead. One nation under God. We will see you then just as far.
Remain standing, bow your head for the invocations. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance as we meet tonight to conduct business of our city government. Help us keep in mind that we are here to serve the people of Westminster. And enable us to make our decisions so that we may do what is best for all the citizen we represent. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Nguyen. Next, we have report from city attorney. Do we have anything to report? City attorney? Thank you so much. Export communication, we don't have. Uh, we don't have special orientation. Next, we have oral communication. See you, Clark.
I I just have a brief report from city clerk as well.
Okay.
Okay, so just briefly, since we last met, we've had a few things going on as far as. Putting out press releases, putting out information to. You know, to our residents and and business community. So just wanted to reiterate that we do have materials that are available. On, you know, on our website at W W W dot Westminster hyphen C A dot G O V. Have a dedicated coronavirus page, update page, and within that page, we have. We have multiple flyers, resources, all of our press releases that have been reviewed. And of course, people can go to project Westminster home, and that's where the page is housed at. Um, and you know, we try to keep up to date as much as we possibly can. We encourage anyone who's affiliated with the Westminster community and anyone living here. To follow us on on social media and to visit that.
Thank you so much for that report. So next.
May I have a question?
Yes.
As could this city manager also elaborate on what we're doing to with our in regards to our staff or essential workers that are still working?
Thank you. Thank you, Sergio. Can you can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Um, yes, so we do have masks for all our essential workers. People in the offices are wearing them if they're in contact with each other in rooms or is either battered stain. You know, six feet apart, everybody that's out in the public, we ask them to wear them. And they are doing that, and we are supplying them with that those masks.
Is it are are they required to wear them?
They are not required to wear them. It is recommended, but most are. The ones in the public, the ones in the public, yes, I'm requiring them to wear them.
I I have a concern. I mean, this is a public health and safety concern. I mean, almost life and death. If you think about the situation we're in, I want to know if there's a way to require all staff to wear. P P E and or look for us to. Acquire some and make every effort to acquire some and make sure we provide all staff members, especially our. Our public works members that are out in the community. I've I've seen some and they are not wearing. P P E. So I don't know if I need to walk on an emergency item to request that we require all staff to wear P P E. And that we one provide them with P P E and if not reimburse them for P P E if they purchased it on their own. Is it possible to have a walk on item, emergency I public safety item?
Yes, the answer, yes, you could have a walk on item. Having said that, though, the manager under her emergency authorities could order that.
So can so that's a request. So I don't I don't know. Will you honor my request that we. Require all staff to wear P P E indoors and outdoors, especially anybody that's relating to the public. And that we make every effort to provide all our staff members. P P E and and acquire P P E. And to reimburse any staff members that have already spent money on their own P P E.
Does that? Doesn't it require a? Put that on the agenda? Is that something that the city, the interim city manager can do that?
The city manager has the authority under her emergency powers to do so if she so desires.
So the so does she?
Yes, I can do that for you.
Can you read back, repeat back what I my request is?
Um, I will require that we, uh, the the staff. Wears P P E and that we reimburse them or furnish them with P P E.
Yes, so all staff, especially.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I would just ask, is there is this while employees are sitting at their desk or only out in the field or? When they're interacting with other people? Do we need to clarify that?
That's a great question. I think. I I mean, I think at this point, workers are all workers are essential, and I think everyone is vulnerable. And what we if we can have all staff wear it, I mean, indoors and outdoors, I I I prefer that. Again, it's a health and safety issue, and they're still out there on the front lines or they're dealing with people every day. They're picking up papers, exchanging, you know, objects and just never know. I prefer. You know, again, that we provide that for that for for all our staff at all times.
All right, so, uh, city manager, we handle that, right?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, so next we have oral communication because of COVID nineteen. So all the speaker resident. May submit their concerns or any question to email. So if look, do we receive any email from any member?
Yes.
From the community?
So. We received a few e comments, one from Leanne Scott. Um, and basically requesting that that you impose a moratorium on small cells and other wireless infrastructure permit processes and deployments until COVID nineteen. Is over and then. Another e comment from Carson Caps who from who basically asked to see what measures. Are taking to protect low income and homeless populations during COVID nineteen. Both these e comments are available on the city's website. They're available on the city's website, and that's all we have for e comments. We do have one speaker request, one request for public speakers.
All right.
Okay, so we have Terry Rains. In a second, and I will toggle her in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
Okay. Good evening, Terry Rains Westminster. This is difficult because I cannot make eye contact or show my expressions in a teleconference. But I felt the need to speak. Although the results are not yet final, it appears the gang of three have won the battle, but I assure you the war is not over. It is sad that less than seventeen thousand residents voted in the city of with a population of over ninety two thousand, just eighteen percent. To borrow a quote from one of our candidates, I am not so much sad for me as I am for the city. And quote Sophocles, I would prefer even to fail with honor than to win by cheating. I am really sad and angry at how the Vietnamese speaking voters in our city were lied to, manipulated and controlled by these three to secure their victory. They told them to call, come and call and come to their offices so they could tell them how to vote and take their ballots. And offered them a certificate and probably more for doing so. They paid people to go door to door to do the same even after the stay at home order. They sent dozens of hit piece mailers out full of lies, propaganda and personal attacks. Their thugs stole and destroyed virtually every large campaign sign of their opposition right up till election day. Yesterday, I was told by Vietnamese voters that these so called officials were offering to print ballots. And envelopes for Vietnamese voters in their office and bring them to the voters' homes with the condition that they would vote in their presence. And allow them to collect and submit their ballots right then and there. This matter is being investigated. Also, Kimberly Ho had people approach voters in line at the R O B to invite them to her victory party. Blatant illegal use of public resources by Kimberly Ho to campaign against the recall was allowed by the mayor and city attorney. Decorum rules were not enforced by the mayor against their supporters during council meetings. Personal attacks against Thai Do, especially in Vietnamese, were allowed, and residents who spoke against them were interrupted and even verbally attacked by them. Since they control and dominate most of the local Vietnamese media, A K A state media, the Vietnamese speaking voters never heard the truth. They promoted the sensationalism and lies spewed forth by YouTubers like Kai No and Quan Nam. Who were sent to disrupt events. The few Vietnamese media outlets that they don't control are accused of being aiders and abetors of communism, as are the rest of us who oppose them. Sadly, many Vietnamese immigrants believe their lies about communism being the reason for the recall and Q Hong starting it. They don't understand that these three are doing to them the very thing they fled from in Vietnam. You three should be ashamed of yourselves, and I don't know how you sleep at night. You divided our city and made this about race. You said only the Vietnamese residents and businesses matter. You allow the latter to not pay their fair share of. Sales tax, forcing the rest of us to bear the burden. You said you must remain in office so the Vietnamese can keep control of the city. We are a diverse city, and our city council should reflect that and represent everyone equally, and I hope you three got that message with this recall effort. You have divided the Vietnamese community with resolution forty nine fifty three and the Tet Parade decision. You don't give a damn, sorry, about anyone but yourselves. Where have you been during the COVID nineteen crisis, busy buying votes and attacking your opposition? No time to actually help the community you serve. Over nine thousand voters signed the recall petitions, and I don't know why they all didn't vote. But the fiasco at the register of voters didn't help. The R O V's decision to not allow in person voting for this election was not per the governor's order. That off that order authorized and encouraged election officials to allow it while taking precautions to protect the public's health. There was no consistent or official communication from the R O V. The emergency voter options were based on people calling them. And getting a different answer every time they called, but apparently these three got special advance notice and exploited the system. In closing, I want to clearly thank everyone who worked so tirelessly on this effort. A lot of blood, sweat and tears, along with money went into it. Our campaign and candidates chose to take the high road and not resort to dirty tactics. And cheating. We want a better city through a better city council, and eventually we will get it. We won in many ways. We came together as a community and made many new friends. We opened the eyes of many who are now actively involved in city matters. Personally, I have never worked so hard and so long on something in my life and not succeeded. But then again, I have never been up against such evil forces like the gang of three. November, here we come.
City clerk.
Um, at this time.
Any other speaker?
I do not have any other additional speakers, and if there's anybody who wants to raise their hand in the queue.
All right, if not, I move to the consent calendar then. Okay, all manner list under the consent calendar, I consider routine and maybe approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless members of the council or staff request. The specific item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion. You may have the motion.
Motion to approve.
We have the motion from Councilmember Nguyen or Contreras. I.
Second.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Ho, second. City clerk. Can you roll call vote?
Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah.
Councilmember Do.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
See that motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have regular business. Item five point one, a wild contract of Mac Fund and Avenue Street improvement from Beach Boulevard to Magnolia Street. I think this is a good item, so I. Move approval.
I second it.
Moved by Mayor Todd, moved by Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, Charlie. Did I second it or?
I second.
I think Councilmember Contreras.
Okay, all right.
So, uh, Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Do.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero to approve the award of contract to the lowest in responsive bidder, an amount of one million four hundred eighty one thousand four hundred and sixty four dollars. To Argent Noble Company, all the bids be rejected and authorize a ten percent contingency. In the amount of one hundred forty eight thousand two hundred forty six dollars for potential change orders. And authorize the interim city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
Five point two contractual agreement with the County of Orange to provide services for the Westminster Family Resource. Center. So I like to. Move to group seconds. I think this is a really excellent item. Uh, we've been receiving the funding. From the County of Orange, and I I will thank our city staff for working really hard for this item.
Has anybody, uh, uh, seconded?
I have seconded.
Yeah.
Uh, we actually have a motion made by Councilmember Contreras and seconded by Mayor Todd.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, uh, Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Do. That's Councilmember Do.
He's muted.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
See that motion carried five to zero to approve the contract contractual agreement with the County of Orange. To provide services to the Family Resource Center in the amount of three hundred eighty seven thousand five hundred dollars per fiscal year. Beginning July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. And approve modifications to the job titles and or descriptions for the following part time positions. Community Engagement Coordinator, Family Support Advocate and Information and Referral Specialist. And authorize the interim city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
Five point three, copper radio agreement by and between. Uh, number C zero two zero three seven by and between Orange County Transportation Authority Lead Agency. The city of Westminster, Fountain Valley, Santa Ana and Huntington Beach for Edinger Avenue Corridor Traffic Signal Program.
Give you a brief, just brief overview on this item, just for the public's sake.
You may have a staff report.
Mayor Member of the Council, this is Marwan. I'll be glad to give you a report on that. This is a cooperative agreement that you mentioned between. The cities of Westminster, Fountain Valley, Santa Ana and Huntington Beach. And O C T A with O C T A being the lead agency. To provide signal coordination along Edinger Avenue from Bolsachica in Huntington Beach. All the way to Richie Street in Santa Ana. Uh, we've done many of these over the years where all the cities get together so that one major arterial gets coordinated. So somebody who's traveling down the street does not hit any red lights, hopefully, or minimum if we can. Uh, the cost of this project is, um, for Westminster share is three hundred fifty thousand dollars. However, um, three hundred thirty six thousand of it is a grant through O C T A. And this is only costing Westminster about fourteen thousand dollars. And that money is gonna come from our traffic impact fee and will be budgeted in the next year's budget. That's it. That's my report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, that was motion made by Councilmember Contreras, seconded by Councilmember Do. Roll call vote, Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Do.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried a five to zero to approve cooperative agreement number C dash zero dash twenty thirty seven by in between Orange County Transportation Authority. The cities of Westminster, Valley, Santa Ana and Huntington Beach for the Edinger Avenue Corridor Traffic Signal Synchronization Project, Project P.
Item, next item, five point four. Alternative based rental assistance program. May I have a staff report because this is a really important item? May I have a staff report?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, I was having some technical difficulties there. So this is this is a complex item, so thank you for letting me present on it, Mayor of the Council. This item here is for tenant based rental assistance program. It has been formulated in accordance with federal standards using a home dollars. Home is a federal grant that we receive on an annual basis. You're considering this item tonight as a part of the annual process, something we do every year to allocate home funds. So if you like this item and you want to move it forward, we would bring it back to you as a part of the entire annual plan that you'll be reviewing on May thirteenth, following a public hearing. So this is not, yeah.
Okay, are you done presentation? I can't see you so.
Oh, yeah. Let me see if I can get my video. I know I can't. I'm sorry.
Like, I guess my question was, I know this is the item that we've been talking about for a while about moving forward in support of rental assistance for families in need. I was reading the staff report, and I'm still not clear in terms of, it looks like you're looking at long term rental assistance. Now, given this COVID nineteen pandemic, I wanted to see if we could. Shift those dollars and make them not so much to house someone for an entire year, but maybe help a family or or I mean, help families now that majority of people are. A good number of people are not working. I mean, we need that support for either mortgage or rental assistance. Is is that some is that this item or is that a different item?
That's a different item. This program does not allow for us to do that. The the federal regulations for home dollars right now are still very stringent.
So they must be for rent rental use only for long term?
Correct. Yeah, it's it's not short term assistance. Now, we just to deviate a little bit, what we do see coming down from from the CARES Act at the federal level. Is some C D B G funds. So we are trying to figure out how we can make kind of a lighter weight program. That would be temporary assistance. There's something called subsistence subsistence programming. That we're looking into and trying to figure out how that meets the federal regulations for the new C D B G funds that are coming. But that is not this program. This program is still under the standard federal requirements that has. A lot of strings and regulations, so it's not very flexible to be able to react to the crisis that we're in.
So the money for this program is only four hundred thousand and, you know, we. Uh, you know, the money only for allocate for twelve to fourteen families with children. Am I correct? And this is, let's go for so.
Yes.
Only fourteen family?
Yes, that that is our best estimate. It the money does not go nearly as far as you would hope that it does. Because the housing market is so expensive, the way that the way that this works, so it if you have a low income family. We are subsidizing their ability to pay a market rent.
For how long, may I ask? For how long and how how many months, how many weeks?
A year.
A year?
One to two years.
One to two year.
Yes.
I I mean, I like this idea better than the one we've had in the past because I I've seen situations where we invest. Hundreds of thousands of dollars to just revitalize a current unit. In this case, if we can house fourteen families, that's. At least for a year or two, if if they're lucky, then I I I definitely want to be supportive of that. I like to make that item.
Did you say you move?
Yeah, move it. Is anybody?
I second it.
All right, we have a motion, a second to move this item.
That was moved by Councilmember Contreras, moved and seconded by Councilmember Nguyen. So Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras. Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Do.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero to consider the use of federal home funds to implement the Westminster Tenant Based Rental Assistance Program. And authorize staff to solicit proposals from experienced and qualified service providers. Um, to implement the program beginning July first, twenty twenty.
So point of clarification, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, Alexa, that, again, I'm I'm still attached to this. Funding because I think it's extremely important in the situation we're in. Um, do you know how long and what the window is to? Get clarity on these dollars and how we can allocate them to help families in need? That's this additional funding that through the CARES.
Additional funding?
Yes.
Yeah, there we, there's no, um. There's not a hard deadline right now. We have time to figure it out. Um, when when the federal government passed the bill, you know, they they then turn it over to their staff who has to figure out the regulations and how it has to work. So we're having daily calls at this point with our local HUD representatives, um, trying to get clarity on what the rules are going to be. We're hopeful that by next week, we're gonna have a little more information. It's 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 starting to flow. But but we don't have all the answers yet. So in a perfect world, we'll be, um, back to council at the first meeting of May. With with some answers on how we can spend the incoming new dollars as a result of the CARES Act.
Thank you.
All right, any, uh, with no other question, I go to items six point one. Resolution adopting a list of projects for fiscal year twenty to twenty one to be funded by Senate B one, S B one. The Road Repair and Accountability Act. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
Yes, motion made by Councilmember Contreras, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho. So Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Remember Do.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried five to zero to adopt a resolution entitled, A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster. Adopting a list of projects for fiscal year twenty to twenty one to be funded by Senate Bill one, S B one, the Road Repair and Accountability Act.
Commission and committee items, seven point one, request for parking restriction on the south side of. Maple Street, where a Locust Street.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, second.
Sir, who is the maker on that motion again?
I I call for that motion, Charlie.
Perfect.
I second it.
Okay, the motion made by Councilmember Nguyen and seconded by Councilmember Do. Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Do.
Yes.
Senator Nguyen.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried five to zero to adopt a resolution entitled, A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster. Providing for no parking or stopping at a certain location on the south side of Maple Street, not Locust Street.
Thank you. Next, we have comments and requests for agenda item from city council agency member, including A B. One, two, three, four, report when required. Vice Mayor Ho.
Me first? Do you want to come back to me?
And Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, sir. Um, I do, or once I want, again, want to thank all city staff that are working. That are putting in the extra time and. Out in the front lines doing the work to keep our city functioning. So I want to, again, acknowledge our city manager and her team and all staff members. That are out there and again, doing the work. And I the reason why I brought that item earlier, um, because I think that they are, one, essential, and we should treat them as essential. And do everything we can to protect them and ensure that they're safe. And that we're providing them all the proper equipment so that they can continue, one, doing their jobs comfortably and. Feel secure and know that we are there to support them. So, um, again, thank you, and I hope that, you know, that we move forward with that item, require all staff to wear P P E and that we do everything we can to. Ensure that they have P P E available or we reimburse them for any expenses they may have had. Um, I I do, I do want to make sure we formalize that. I do, I do want to make sure we formalize that request. So I'd like to see if there's a way we can put together possibly a resolution in support of our city staff and ensure that in the future, if this type of item ever, you know, moves, happens, I mean, if we're in this situation in the future that we have everything we can available to them and without second guessing or, or having to, you know, push an item through to make, make it so, so. Can, can, I like to put an item on the agenda, hopefully, you know, I don't know, when next time we're meeting, I don't hope, maybe there's a meeting we might have before the next emergency meeting, hopefully, everything's okay, but if that does happen, I like to have an item in a resolution in support of essential workers, that being our city staff and, and doing everything we can to protect them and, and these every day and then especially in this, this time.
Okay, so that's the request for the next agenda item, right?
Yes, i- in case we meet sooner, but, I mean, hopefully, you know.
You, you, are you, are you trying to have a part for, for the, are you trying to direct staff to formulate a, an emergency policy to protect the C D employees in case of a crisis like this, like the coronavirus, the crisis right now?
Yes.
Would you start to say?
Yes, but I'm not sure if it's, if it's a policy or a resolution, I, I would defer to staff, so I guess like to work with staff on putting that together, but I like to have the opportunity to put that I'm on the agenda for our next meeting and staff and I could define what that looks like between now and then.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it.
If that was a request from Councilmember Contreras and seconded by Councilmember Doe and that's a request for a resolution or some kind of policy document to support the essential workers, essentially city staff. Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho. Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero to add that to the next agenda.
And in closing with my comments, I'd like to, again, thank city staff for providing all that information regards to COVID nineteen. I know that it's ongoing and every day there's so much of information and we're trying to decipher all that information coming through every day. So I want to, again, thank them for putting together all that material. I know they're doing everything they can, putting graphics online, pushing the information out. I, I, I try to keep up with all that information, it's just too much. One of the things I, I am getting calls about, and I know that we're looking at putting together a mailer, but we want to make sure that this rental eviction portion is clearly stated and what, what people can do to, or, or what that really means, because I think there's people with the assumption that, that, I mean, I've talked to someone the other day, they made the assumption that because we passed, you know, eviction moratorium that they, they're somehow free of rent for this coming month, but they did nothing to notify their manager or, or know that they have to pay that money back once we, once we come out of this mess. So anything we can to further explain that for our residents and, and multiple languages would be extremely helpful. And I know that working on a mailer just to, again, educate people about the importance of being out. And then, lastly, and I'm, I'm done. Is there a hotline that we could create to help people report businesses that are still functioning? You know, there's coffee shops that are still hosting people inside their restaurant and you have people that are actually still serving food indoors? Is there a number that we could have easily ready for people to report these types of situations?
City manager?
So, let's see, we're muted. Well, so I can, I can actually add to that, that hotline about open businesses. So we currently have a, we actually have a reporting page that people access through the city's website or the Project W website and the coronavirus page in which people can report businesses that are non-essential and still open, as well as any, you know, eateries or restaurants that are serving dine-in. We've, we've had, you know, people call in and we've either sent, you know, sent the residents to that form or we ourselves have, have sent the information to, to our code enforcement who is essentially going out and, and following up on these concerns. As far as the phone number goes, I don't know that we, we don't have a hotline that's set up per se, but we are, we are, we do those calls via our, you know, our city line.
Could we designate possibly a number? Again, I've seen, again, calls about massage parlors and nail salons and, again, I know, I understand people are trying to still make a living, but I think in this situation, obviously, we're not, no one's able to do that. So there's, if we can designate a line or a number they can call for now, make it a little easier, that would be helpful. We, we can't have people out there patronizing these locations and endangering their lives and others. It just, I think we just need to step that up a little bit more, make it easier for people to report, be able to report these situations.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly look into setting up like a voicemail hotline type of a phone number.
Thank you. I'm done, thank you, sir.
All right.
I've spoken.
Okay, Councilmember Doe?
Thank you very much. I just want to thank you, staff, for taking care of the city, you know, in this pandemic, it's a crisis, it's affect everybody, especially those who have to work to, to get the paycheck. And I remember seeing the staff email mentioning that we encourage is the public to wear face masks in public. Is any way that we can publicize that a little more? I mean, you know, there's hit and miss and I, I saw some businesses in the city that, that post sign that asking people to wear a face mask. Is any way that we can produce some of those poster, you know, A and F I eleven and kindly distribute to the businesses and, and posting in a window? Just to remind the, the public that, you know, and to encourage the public to put on a face mask? Is, is that something we can, that can be done, Sherry?
City manager, yeah.
There you go, sorry, I was having a problem unmuting myself, I apologize for that. So you, can you repeat what you'd like us to do, to do an eight and a half mailer or some sort of?
Well, you know, we, if we can, if we can distribute, I mean, send out a, a sign, eight and a half by eleven, something that would, from the city, encourage the public to wear face masks, especially, you know, businesses that opening right now, you know, food and supermarkets, you know, all the essential businesses, and it just had a post in the window encouraging the public to put on a face mask.
Okay.
Because it's kind of weird, it's kind of weird for it somewhere and some don't, so.
I can certainly work with staff to get something like that going.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, you know, I, I don't have anything except I have one request that since we have a stay-at-home order, most, most people in the city have to stay at home. I, I have to go to work, so if the next meeting is on Wednesday, can we have it done before noon? On Wednesday, it's just seven P M. Do we need a, a vote for that or is that something we can discuss later?
So the, the council has, the council can certainly, what would happen is cancel the meeting of the twenty-second. That would be at the direction of the council, that, you know, could be done tonight. But the, and then we can call for a special meeting at whatever time, you know, you, you would have in mind. It could be that, it could be another day, it, you know, my, my concern.
Same, same, same days, fine, but, you know, if we end early to ten o'clock in the morning or something like that?
Okay, well, so my concern is always, you know, for quorum, and so we, you know, we can certainly work that out with, you know, with the, with the special meeting, it's, it's only, it's twenty-four hours notice, but we can, you know, we, we certainly have a little bit of time between now and that meeting to, to figure out a, a time that works for everybody so we can ensure quorum.
Okay, so we're gonna discuss this later, right? We don't need to, to have a council vote?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nguyen?
Sorry about that, I, I was on mute. I have a chance to talk to Christine a little bit before the meeting. City clerk, may I ask for your explanation as, hold on, hold on. As how the R O V is going to invoice us for the, for the cost of the election in detail so that we know that they give us the estimate before, but due to the COVID nineteen, some of the services have been canceled. Like the two vote centers wasn't there for the, for the election. So I, I don't know whether they are going to be worst for that or they are going to take off the list or just make adjustment to the cost.
Yes, thank you, sir. So as you know, when we, when we, you know, had the idea to recall election was, you know, was going to happen, we did ask the Register of Voters Office for an estimate. The way that they calculate an estimate, it's based on a cost per registered voter. Plus, they also give a percentage in anticipation of an increase of registered voters. That being said, what they do is they take down costs such as the cost to have a vote center, cost for printing, mailing, postage. That was something that was new for this year is that cities were required to pay for, for all the postage. And then that, that cost is all broken down as a cost per, you know, per voter. At the time, the estimate was about three hundred and twenty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the election. Given that, you know, with COVID nineteen, the vote centers were essentially closed and so I don't anticipate that that will be charged for that cost because the Register of Voters Office charges for the exact cost of conducting business. At this time, I don't have the exact cost yet. You know, voter registration did, did increase, but, but due to, you know, having the vote centers canceled, we did have to do an additional mailer, or the, the R O V did an additional mailer for us that went out to all of the registered voters. So of course, the postage and printing costs would go up. So, you know, we, I, I anticipate that we will get an invoice by the end of the month. And at that time, it'll either be presented back as part of the budget or, you know, as, as a standalone item for, you know, for an appropriation, because we don't have that, you know, that amount, you know, funded at, at the moment. But, but as of right now, we're just waiting on the Register of Voters to, to provide us with that estimate. I wasn't able to reach them today, but as soon as, you know, we get the estimate, then it'll certainly be presented back to council, and this is the way.
Okay, all right, thank you very, very much for that. One question for C D attorney, please. The vandalism of the campaign signs, I know there is a state law out there for vandalisms for those people who did that, but I know that repeatedly over one campaign, I mean, one election after another, it's always happened over and over again. I don't know whether we, what, what we have to do, but just a question for you to see what we can do above and beyond. Either we have to increase the, the, you know, enforcement out there to, to watch for it or to look for it, or we have to have another ordinance or whatever, you know, accompany with the, the state law. So I don't, I don't know at this time, but I, I, that's a question for you. Is that clear or?
C D attorney, we cannot hear you. I cannot.
I think that's something.
Okay, I, 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 I'm sorry, I've muted. We can't prepare report for you. It is a, it is a common problem in other cities as well. We did actually do a successful prosecution in Fullerton in the last election. It does require evidence. Department does prosecution in the sense the DA hears from the police department, a report, receives a report, and then prosecutes based upon the information the police department gathers. What we need to do is work with the police department in developing a program to more actively seek out that evidence and information so we can present those cases to the DA's office.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. I think you answered my questions.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Nguyen?
No, that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes, I would like to thank the interim manager for daily updates on COVID nineteen and our situation. And a very detailed report by her, so I appreciate that. And that really gives us a really good idea of what is going on, what you've been doing. So that's very helpful. And, and I was just wondering regarding the mask, I know that it's been quite difficult. I don't know if that's the case anymore. You know, regarding getting mask and sanitary supplies such as the sterile gel or alcohol wipes sixty percent alcohol gel, et cetera. Do you know anything about that situation, the supplies, how available, how easy it is for people to, to get their hands on the supplies?
So yes, we have been getting supplies. We do have been getting the masks that we request. We do make the request, request through the E O C and they have been furnishing us with those. In addition, some of the, we have an employee that's made masks for us and we've also had some local charities that have donated masks to us, so we do have masks. When you say us. Not the, not the P P E, not the N forty, N ninety-fives, those we are, those to our police officers and those working on the public. Yes, we do have those, the masks that we wear in the office, which are just masks with them, some sort of cover of our face with them, some sort of filter in those, those have been donated to, a lot of those have been donated to staff. But we, we've been very fortunate and we're getting all the supplies that we need, yes.
But I was thinking, I was wondering, the general public, do you know if those are scarce? Are they, are they able to, to purchase or to find supplies to buy or? How rare are those these days? How easy is it for people, for our general public?
It seems like the public is, is getting them. It looks like a lot of people are, you know, there's a lot of make-it-yourself masks online and people are, are starting to get that stuff out there, so I feel like I'm seeing a lot more of it out there.
Great, great, that's really good to hear. That's all I have.
All right, thank you so much, Vice Mayor Ho. And I want to echo that the Councilmember already mentioned, one of the things I would say, that, especially in a room city manager, I think that she worked with her every day and she really calm and really patient. Want to thank our city clerk and honestly, she worked with her too. All right, and with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. And next regular meeting will be Wednesday, April twenty-second, seven P M. Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.